Public, first, a public hearing on the 2021-22 budget. Please stand with me to say the budget.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Collins? Coyle?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Bussler?
Here.
Mary.
This evening, we're holding a public hearing for both the Main Township High School District 207 budget, as well as the answer of the North Suburban Educational Region for Vocational Education budget. Both of these budgets were, and this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald, informing the public that we would be holding this meeting, as well as the tentative budgets were put on display July 1 at the school, the district office, on our website, as well as local public libraries. The sole purpose of the public hearing tonight is for the community to provide any input that they have. The answer budget is on the agenda tonight for an action item, as it needs to file for the state before the end of August. The District 207 budget, we don't adopt until September. That allows us time in case we have public comments to address those public comments, incorporate them into the budget. A little bit of background on the budget. On the district side, our revenues in this budget are about $6 million higher than the 21 budget, primarily due to property taxes, which increased by about 2%. A big surprise was the corporate personal property replacement taxes, which are about $2.4 million, or about 50% corporate profits are up. We anticipated that they would be down during the pandemic, but we were surprised at that. And then the remaining increase in revenues by federal revenues for the CARES Act, dealing with COVID-19 expenditures. On the expenditure side, expenditures are up about $3.5 million. Both salary and benefits were in line with CPI. We had in the ONM fund reduced capital spending because we're going through the facilities master plan and spending all of that money in the capital projects fund. We had some increases in the health life safety fund that paid for about $2 million. Also included in this budget, not in that revenue figure I gave you, is going to be the sale of the remaining $65 million in construction funding funds, which were voter approved. We're looking at a projected deficit of about $4.6 million in our operating funds. That includes a $9 million transfer from the educational fund and operation maintenance fund to the capital project fund to help fund that, as well as that $2 million increase in the health life safety fund. So these are one-time expenditures causing the deficit. I will open the floor now in case we have any public comments regarding the budget.
Public comments?
Hi.
Is this regarding the budget? Are regulars?
No.
No, it's not.
Okay, so immediately when we finish this, we'll start our regulars for me. So you should pass those to the House of Representatives, and then we can address that as soon.
Mary, I have a question. When you said the corporate tax, all the 50%, is that the corporate tax for the state of Illinois or corporate tax for just the corporate?
So it's the corporate personal property replacement tax. In 1994, they stopped taxing corporate personal property and converted it to a corporate tax, and you're given the same proportionate share of your 1994 corporate personal property replacement tax. So really now, it's not a tax on real property, but it's part of a corporate tax. So corporate profits statewide were up, causing then our proportionate share to be.
Okay, so that's why I wanted to see, is that our share divided by the state? Is that what we're basing it on?
So it is whatever percentage we had in 1994 is the same percentage that we now have. So like places that weren't developed, let's say the far west suburbs, they have very little corporate personal property replacement tax because in 1994, they had very little corporate property, which was taxed. Since we were built up, we have a greater proportionate share of this, of this pot. And it's, they still call it replacement tax, although it is based on corporate progress, not on real property.
So if it's based on 1994, then we had to, I mean, if corporate corporations have moved from this point where, if it make any difference at all?
Does make any difference.
Any other public comments on the budget? All right, we'll adjourn that meeting. All right, I'm going to call to order our regular scheduled for me. Twenty seconds, 2021. We've already said the pledge allegiance, so we're going to apply to this meeting as well. Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Bussler?
Here.
Okay, before we go, we're now at the point where the board welcomes public comments. And we ask anybody who that wants to address or handle public comment to fill out one of those forms. Pass them in. If you've got comments yet, please do so. It's very important to revisit what public comments are. It's your opportunity to address the board, but it is not a question and answer period. If you have continuing concerns or you want administration to follow up with you, let Ken know, or Matt, not Ken, Dan.
Dan.
Dan. But somebody from here will get that if you want follow-up. It is a three-minute limitation. We don't mean to be rude. We want to respect you. We want to respect your time, but we will let you know when the three minutes is running up. We'll give you a five-second warning. And then when the three minutes is up, it's up. We operate the board and District 207 operates on respect, honesty, open sensibility. And we expect our public comments to be the same. So we're, that we run a decision based on what we think. Public comments. Matthew, stand.
Thank you for letting me speak. As you guys know, things are getting a lot more dangerous in society, a lot more violent. Crime, including interracial violence, that can give the schools no exception to this district. What really concerns me is these hate emails we're getting. Families are getting disguised as anti-hate emails. One came in and had a link to the email. Clicked on the link, and it said on that webpage, "Those," it mentioned, "those who hold unearned power and privilege." That's hateful, hateful statements, and they're dangerous, intellectually dishonest, and they make the situation worse. And I think if we keep pandering to these groups, things are just going to keep getting worse, and we're going to see more violence. All lives matter. Whether or not violence is done against blacks, Catholics, Jews, and even whites, it's wrong. I think, you know, we've seen it in the districts where people are asked to remove this interracial violence from Facebook, and it just seems to be getting worse. And especially when it comes from people who should know better these kind of emails. It has to stop. Truth should always triumph over being politically correct. But I'll say to any, you know, to the people, the administrators or principals, if they truly believe, you know, there's people who have unearned power and privilege, and they feel like they're one of them, I know plenty of people of color who'd be glad to take these positions. These positions pay hundreds of thousands of dollars per year that taxpayers could barely afford. And one other thing, I really wanted to reply to some of these emails, you know, just ask some questions, not let it go totally unchallenged. And I'm greeted with the do not reply. At first, I thought it might have been a joke, but I guess that's how it is. I know you guys work for us, you know? It's just totally backwards. Thank you.
Scott Olson?
Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Scott Olson from Slings. I thank you for serving the community as you do. I appreciate it. I have a very close concern in mind regarding CRT, critical race theory. And I tried researching it, and I felt pretty deeply into trying to understand it, trying to see on the education side, why would it be good for our children and students? And I think I've been extremely hard on identifying the good parts about teaching that kind of, basically to me, and no matter how, what way I say it, it's going to sound racist, that I think that system is a racist system. I don't think it's wise to educate our children based on other children's skin color and background, that the race, that they should feel oppressed, that the white supremacists should be held liable, responsible for their, not necessarily wrongdoing, but their inability to do things just like the white people do. That's racist. I'm sorry, anyway, I cut it and I spend time on it. I can see that as being more racist by the standard of teaching people that kind of information in young people. Very multiple minds that are, they're going to listen to you, they're going to try to understand. And when all of their classmates are sitting looking back at them, discussing among each other, and all of them are taught the same thing, it's going to start to seem like that's exactly what's happening. And I, I think that's a huge, huge step backwards into the 60s when we had civil rights movements, and we had a lot of controversy about that, that we've been, we've been through the Civil War, and we established law and order based on that. It's not a perfect world, as we all know. There's anguicide, there's good cops, bad cops, there's good citizens, bad citizens. And when you take out a context, one being good, one being bad, assuming that they're both good, you take out a context and, and focus on one's origin, one's skin color, that's racist. And I don't think it should be taught directly or indirectly in our school system. I was unable to find on the district's website anything related directly to the curriculum of CRT.
Your time is up. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your.
Ms. Obi?
Yes, that's me. All right, I'm not gonna, my name is Megan Obi. I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting because I found at work I really wanted to because I wanted to get some idea what CRT is. Because I'm a parent, I'm trying the best I can. Shawn told me that if you come and speak about it, like five weeks, and so I've covered a lot of it. But basically, you know, you, I think you all did the right things. You said, no, we're not going to do this. And you pulled a lot of my friends, and I'm like, yes, we won, we did it, you know? But you didn't pull me. I know this has been like stuck under the rug, like we're not going to do CRT, but it's been like, it's creeping in, like the hallways, and the teachers are speaking about it. And I know firsthand, that's in District 62 where my son goes. You know, I see it with the homework that he gets, the questions, the poetry that he reads. And then most recently, I've also seen it at Main West when my daughter, her favorite, her favorite class is World Cultures. And they, you know, they were supposed to be talking about Africa and what was happening going on, but they're like, no, this is too boring. We got to address this. They spent not only one day, but three days talking about the relationships between black and whites. And my partner to me, she's like, Mom, I can't do this anymore. She couldn't concentrate on her studies. She couldn't listen, even though she was at home in a room just on a computer, but it was tearing her apart that kids were talking about things one way. And, you know, we were trying at home to tell her that, no, that's not right, and just a complexion of interest. And, you know, we loan our kids to do six and a half hours a day. You know, you're supposed to teach them reading, writing, arithmetic, and, you know, stuff that gives them a head in life. We don't want to indoctrinate our kids with all this racist stuff that's going on in the world. You know, as parents, that's our job, you know? We wouldn't say to you as a school, it's our job as parents to provide them with values. It's not your job. Your school, your school board, like I know all your orders come now from the state. But do respect us, please. Do respect the parents. That we know best. We know our kids better than anybody. We know their values. And in the end, it just comes down to you doing my job, and you doing our job. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? I don't have any other cards. Okay, so moving on, update, new super topics?
Couple of things. Just going to show, maybe I'll take a hit, but run. Some of between about six and eight virtual sessions this year. In our quarter, there is a few other areas. And then just kind of an update based on what we're going to do. We are going to continue with the idea of encouraging people who are not vaccinated to wear masks in our schools. We don't have an IDPH on that. We don't have, we don't have that. However, what the data is showing conclusively is that the vaccines are absolutely blocking the people who are in or in this country still getting sick or dying from COVID. They're overwhelmingly folks who have not been vaccinated. So we're going to continue to encourage our students and staff to be vaccinated. Our staff numbers are really high, about 92% of our teachers are vaccinated, about 82% of our overall staff is vaccinated. We don't have all of the data back on the students, but of the ones who have reported, a high, high percentage of those two that are reported have been vaccinated down here. We still have over half the students to get report from one or the other. But that trend holds up. We hope to have a very, very high vaccination number for our students. So we've been sending out messages to parents to make sure that everyone understands the ground rules that we have to follow. And, you know, simply put, if you're vaccinated and there's a contact tracing event, in almost every scenario, you're going to be able to continue the work, continue the school, continue to play or play games, or whether you've been much more successful than if you're not vaccinated. So we're going to continue to share, you know, the information that we have to work under on that. But we felt like that was the best course of action at this time. It's going to be a little bit different in different places. The elementary schools, where there is not a vaccine yet for, you know, first graders, second graders, third graders, I would expect more of them will begin schools this year requiring masking. And to be determined is what it looks like, you know, once the vaccine runs out for those kids. But anyway, that's my update for now.
Okay, so I think your first statement, there's going to be six virtual sections? Is that what you said?
Six or eight virtual sections. Yeah, it could be as high as nine, depending upon how, we're finalizing that this week. So there are still some students who are making some decisions, who are making personal phone calls home to make sure students understand exactly what they're kind of signing up for.
And without these students from all three schools?
Yes. So it was, for example, it would be one section per course, right down to the numbers. So what would be, like you said, kind of a cool experience will be that we'll have students from South, East, and West all in the same virtual section.
With the same teacher who will be available to you, right?
Yes. And it was kind of a space, we had begun actually expanding this even before the pandemic. So we want to continue to sandbox this a little bit, see what the possibilities are.
Any updates on any other programs, personal programs? Okay, moving on to our committee meetings. Education update. The education committee met on July 15. President of the meeting, Lord myself, Charlotte Owen, and Yusuf Abramson. The meeting was called to order at 9:00 o'clock. There were no public comments, but we did have, now it's just the president and me. The first item we discussed was critical race theory and district curriculum. He wanted to talk a little bit about fact and fiction because there was still a lot of reports about critical race theory. Assistant Superintendent Critical Innovation, Dr. Shawn Mesmer, briefly explained the basics of critical race theory as it is the topical topic in the press. This is a highly theoretical topic that we do not teach to kids and have no plans of teaching to kids. It's an advanced theory that is taught in law school and graduate courses. The topic was covered to address any questions or misconceptions about critical race theory. And in fact, during the meeting, we talked a little bit about how we wanted to encourage the public, you know, our parents and our citizens, to approach people who have knowledge of the facts when they're hearing things, so that they have the information from the source. And I think it was a useful meeting that we're going to have. The next item we discussed was equity in the classroom, next steps. Dr. Mesmer spoke about curriculum equity in terms of access to coursework. There's been an overall increase during the 2018 to 2021 school years in students taking AP and dual credit courses, with a positive trend in Latinx against students of color. Dual credit, as you probably know, grants college credit during high school. District 207 follows the safe curriculum guidelines in culturally responsive teaching and connecting lessons to students' lives. Starting in the fall, staff will meet with students by department to determine if students are challenged, feel successful, or feel disconnected, and feel reflected in the curriculum. These perspectives will be used to tweak the curriculum. We then talked about competency-based education, weighted ratings, weighted grades, and detracting. At the completion of the coming school year, students will have gone through integrated Math 1, 2, 3, and taken the SAT. Currently, 100% of students are accessing high school math curriculum with a 95% task rating. Teachers and math coaches have worked very hard over the past year during the pandemic to ensure students have the assistance they need to be successful. Competency-based English courses are in the process of being developed with a year or two left until they commence. Social science will begin the process of exploring competency-based education in the fall. The district also, Shawn also reported that the district investigated and decided to maintain weighted grading while it pursues the elimination of tracking across all disciplines. We also had an instructional services update, which summarized that the district will be fully reopening, following all CDC and IDPH guidelines. The district is not requiring staff or students to be vaccinated, although it is highly recommended. Masking will be optional regardless of vaccination status. Students and staff who are fully vaccinated are not required to wear a mask or contact trace if asymptomatic. Those not vaccinated will have to quarantine for 10 days or four more. I'm not sure that's factored still, but if exposed. The vast majority of staff have been vaccinated. There are many open items to come toward the committee. The meeting was adjourned at 9:40. Thank you. Next, Finance Committee update.
Sure, so the Finance Committee was held on July 19. And members present, myself, Jim, and Yusuf Abramson. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 p.m. There were no public comments. The 2022 budget was discussed. Mary just did a really good kind of recap on it, so I'm not going to go into it. It is, of course, on the website, kind of being displayed in the libraries and schools. Just had our public hearing on the budget today, and the board is going to be asked to adopt the budget in September. We also discussed the VIP and contracts. Mary ran through the three-year contract for athletic photography services for all three schools. Schools have used VIP for several years and are pleased with the services. Put it in a contract as complimentary to keep visual insurance as well as admission. Company also works with the athletic directors and coordinators. The next item we spoke about was Main East and Main West Dean Doctors. This is just a continuation of a five-year agreement for medical coverage in Main East and Main West Training Rooms. And during certain athletic months, we use the same agreement for the last 11 or 12 years. We're very happy with the services. We are going to, today, we will be asked to approve. No further business was discussed, and the management committee was adjourned at 5:15.
Thank you. Next, we'll be going to the grounds, update.
Yes. The, I actually, I can do two updates tonight, one for the May and then for July. The, in addition to the building of the grounds, the meeting was held on, I think, 17th, 2020. Members present, myself, Linda Quayle, and Ashley Gilbert. We called the meeting to order at 4:40. There were no public comments. Rob Martinelli, project manager for Penn of Construction, updated the meeting on the progress of the construction project for the month of June. Overall, the projects are going well at all three schools during the summer construction. Mainy Center Corridor area continues with finishes, and the connecting links along the D-A-R are progressing. The West facade is made south, and the new apartments are being worked on now. And the east facade is ready now. Full completion of the west facade will be next summer. Main West has the most extensive work being done in the old pit area. The concrete has been poured and the drainage below the pit slab has been resolved. The gates connecting the schools to the wing will be completed after school starts. Bid package 3 and 4 and a budget update will be accepted in August. Heather continued to monitor material availability and pre-purchases of equipment. So did not manage when we did the deal for the business, the adjournments. Building the grounds committee had five meetings planned. The next update I have is for the Building and Ground Committee on July 19. Members present, myself, Linda Quayle, and Ashley Gilbert. We called the meeting to order at 5:17. There were no public comments. The first item on the agenda was the energy contract. Director of Buildings and Ground, Mr. Dave Alm, updated the committee on the demand response program, which all three district schools have participated in. The program assists electrical grid stability, and in the event an emergency is called, District 207 agrees to reduce electrical consumption. The district will get paid approximately $25,000 or so, whether energy is curtailed or not. Main South CoGen helps support the grid, and when energy is needed, the managing company, NLX, notifies the district and then takes control of the coGen for a period of time. Twice a year, the district has a preventive maintenance contract to perform maintenance and ensure the coGen is fully functional at all times. The district recommends participating in the program. Next item on the agenda was low voltage consulting services contract for bid packages 3 and 4. The current low voltage contract ended with bid package 2.5. The new contract for BP 3 and 4 includes network wiring, network wiring, projector cables, and public address speakers. M&amp;R Design has high expertise with low voltage and will continue for the rest of the design package at a total cost of $40,500. Next item was summer projects update. In addition to the master facility projects, several capital maintenance projects have been performed over the summer. The roof over the Main East CTE wing was replaced, along with roof supports installed for the new rooftop HVAC equipment. The project is nearly complete. The roofing project of the Main South visual art sign is nearly near completion, and the stadium turf will be completed by the end of July. The new auditorium ringing is 35% complete. Lastly, the skylight and surrounding roofing is being replaced at Project Academy. The next item was construction update. The Mainy Center Court is 95% done and is a phenomenal space. The cafeteria, kitchen flooring, and ceiling will be turned over prior to August 5. The girls' locker room will be completed near the end of September. Things are looking good at Main South. Things are looking good at Main South Commons area. Final inspection will be held for this week in the main office. The kitchen is still in progress, and we are coordinating with Quest to finish. The east facade is continuing with exterior decaying, and the west facade is taking shape. The west facade north side will be worked on next summer. The new dance room will be turned over at the end of August. At Main West, site work continues as the new fieldhouse continues. The library in main office will be turned over at the end of July. Approximately 20% of the floor in the cafeteria has been cut out with the project due to be completed and turned over at the end of semester one. The L Wing and the A Wing will be turned over the first week of August, and furniture is coming. Buses will get through the bus concourse, however. The gates will not open or close until after school starts. Being no further business, we adjourned the meeting at 5:55 p.m.
So much, and I, for those of you who haven't seen or followed the videos of the constructions, they're still well done. Principals, you did a great job in the last one guiding us through. It's just, schools are going to be beautiful and up to speed with the innovative technology and learning that District 207 stands for and has won awards for. So I could be, anybody who has not seen the videos or followed them should do something because it really gives you good sense of the actual. Okay. Monthly status of finances.
Any report packet are the May and June financial reports. We are undergoing our end-of-year audit currently and taking the votes from a cash basis to a full accrual basis of accounting. So these June financials are what I call the in-between financials. So there are some accrual entries in them, but not on a full accrual basis yet. We anticipate ending the year better than projected, and I will entertain any questions that anybody has on either the May or June financials.
Mary?
Well, going to the year better than the past.
Monthly status of your requests.
Four, and they have all been processed or written in the process.
Moving to our consensus agenda, do I have a motion for six A through E?
Six E.
Collins?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion at number seven, Board of Education Policies and Procedures, second reading, um, seven, 3:45. Use of educational technologies, student data privacy and security. So move. Second.
So this is the second reading. If you remember, I know we've had a July meeting, so it's been a while. But this is the Student Online Personal Protection Act. This is signed into law, and it's pretty standard operating procedure now to make sure that we're protecting student data when we're using educational technology services. And so this is a, this policy is straight out of press policy to ensure that it meets the spirit of the law.
Any questions? Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion at number eight, Textbook and supplemental resources, adoption for 2021. Second. Shawnee?
Yeah, so if you, these are two novels that we are adding as choice reads for students. As you can see, I'm sorry, there's one, sorry, there's one, but this is an additional novel. We continue to build out our library to do this for choice reading. So if there's any questions related to this, be my manager.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
You have a motion at number nine, ENSR budget. We'll move.
As we noted in the public hearing, we are the fiscal administrator for ENSR, and as such, the board adopts their budget class of the state.
To be clear, the motion for the Board of Education, scanning at the administrative district for the North Bergen region of educational education, also acronym known as ENSR, adopts the ENSR budget and resolution presented in accordance with recommendations in the ENSR. Any questions? Mary, you moved this over.
Yes, we prepared it. We've worked closely with ENSR, updating their financial information as we've done since then.
Is there a question of is this higher than last, much higher than last year?
It's around the same each and every year. The grants have remained fairly consistent over the last several years.
The reason I ask is because I was wondering if with the emphasis on CTE, if their budget, did they, should they?
They talk it, they don't talk it.
Okay. So we're, we're kind of like, we're the walkers.
It's just a federal.
We're the walkers.
We're the walkers.
Thank you. Quayle?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion for number 10, approval of the tentative budget for 2021 and 2022. Somebody could actually move to first. Can you read the?
No.
Yes, we need the board.
We'll still move that the Board of Education approves the tentative budget for the 2021, 2022. This little year, all presented, total revenue and other financial resources of $277,338 and total expenditure of $227,455,149.
Your secretary?
We didn't know if you're lineating. This is the first time that the board is being, adopting the tentative budget. Changes will be made to this budget in September, primarily in the area of there's some COVID-related laws in terms of special education as well as some of these virtual sections that we were talking about earlier. Those will be incorporated into the budget if they're not substantial changes.
Any other questions? Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion for number 11, Medical Education Program with advocate for dental hospitals.
This is for the Dean Doctor and Ready Room at Main East and Main West. Main South has a similar program with a different organization, wider half, more complex.
This is our, what year was it?
I believe it's our 11th or 12th year.
Long time.
Any questions or comments? Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion for number 12, Agreement with Main High School Hockey Association. So move. Second.
So simply, this is our annual adoption of our club hockey team that uses our main
This is for all preschools.
All preschools have the opportunity to play together.
Same as the previous one, second.
Yes.
Same as the previous one, second. Yes, for the main year.
Any questions or comments?
I have just a question. Do the other districts pass on a similar hockey program with their schools? Some they do. Because I imagine it's too expensive to maintain a, yeah, to maintain a high strength in equipment.
Yeah, there's a whole club organization in Illinois that plays. It's not part of IHSA and probably never will be, but this is how it's done pretty much throughout the state for this level of hockey.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number 13, Approval of Bids and Awarding of Contracts. We're going to break these down somewhat if they make sense, and Mary, feel free to correct me or change the order if I do it. So 13A, NLX Demand Response Program Synchronized Reserve Market. We'll move.
Second. This is an agreement where, similar to our demand response, they will be allowed to operate our CoGen for up to 14 times a year for up to nine minutes each time. In exchange for that, they will receive $25,000. Help us to exercise the CoGen system as well as providing some stability to the electrical
Any questions, comments? We've talked about this. We have. Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion on 13B, M&amp;R Design Low Voltage Consulting Services. We'll move.
Second. This is just a continuation of the low voltage design services for the package management for at a cost of $40,560.
If you guys chose currently as the Main South, is this also inclusive for Main West and Main East as well, or?
The first one, the XL Act, was only for Main South because Main South is the only school that has a CoGen system and is able to generate their own electricity. The M&amp;R Design is for all three schools to low voltage construction.
You have any questions, comments? Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
I have a motion on 13C1, on the VIP Athletic Photography Services for all preschools. So move. Second.
This is a longstanding agreement for patterned resources with VIP. The schools receive both in exchange goods as well as commission themselves.
And we've talked about this numerous times in numerous years. But if you have any questions or comments? Kilburg?
Aye.
Quayle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yousuf Abramson?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
For the remaining for the bids and awarding contracts for all three textbooks, Mary, you want, can we do them together? Do you want to?
Sure, since they're all Sean's.
Yes.
Oh, Sean, do you have a preference?
I would say do D through H, and then I would do C.
Okay, that's what I had, how I had. Okay. I will move. Yeah, so we need a motion, D through H. So 13D through H, I move 13D through H. A second.
Second. Sean?
Yes, and so we bring this about this time every year, usually July-ish. And this is just the updated textbook licenses for the next full year. Anything in excess of $25,000, you can report. So that's why you see all of these. These are, these are the parent companies of your health textbooks, your accounting textbooks, things of that nature. That's the, these are the contracts that we'll go forward with that are funded through student fees.
We've talked about this. Any questions or comments at this time?
If students have given their love to the E textbooks, they really could have.
Yes. It always increases, it increases the reliance, teaching, right?
So we've almost capped out. We're well over 90% of most of the materials that kids are consuming outside of the English class and the novels, almost exclusively now, and AP is still heavily.
And we've hit the point, correct me if I'm wrong, that it saves our families money.
Long ago.
Remember when we first started, it was.
So what stopped us? So we were one-on-one early, and we started with E textbooks, probably, but 10 years ago, 12 years ago, if a hardback was $112, the E textbook was $120 or $150. And then eight or nine years ago, Pearson changed the market because it dropped, and they're bringing up the prices of E textbooks. The net result of this, and especially you, our board members, will know this, but we have redone our fees to our families, and we save our families hundreds of dollars because take one textbook, one hard copy textbook could be $100, while the E textbooks are $20. So extracting that over all of your classes over four years, and we save easily hundreds of dollars for kids for a year of fees. So it's, it has been a change.
At the same time, it does less weight on the book.
And it, and it, so it helps students on, that's a real thing. I mean, that's true. We can't just carry around. We can continue to look at extended year contracts. So when we first started, we could go to order year-to-year contracts. Some of these are six-year contracts, not this year-to-year, which gets us a much, much better per license rate. So textbooks are on two-year, Spotify, mom. You're now buying subscriptions. You're not actually buying this copy of something.
Can I just add?
Sure.
Or something?
Go first, raise your hand.
So last year, my son, the freshman, was taking E human deal. And at some point, maybe within the first month, he was with classmates and they were studying, and they had physical textbook. And I said, hold up, wait up, you don't have a physical textbook. And he said, well, I asked my teacher, and she said that they didn't have enough. I said, well, we need to reach out to the teacher and ask again. It was like, hey, you know, it might be helpful, just because his friends had said, no, Jackson, you really should get this. Of course, you knew the textbook. She agreed, you know, she did respond and say, we don't have anymore. They've all been handed out, or at least the copies that we had. So I did reach out to the counselor who was in the mind. Now, I was going to go ahead, I did look up on Amazon, the cost of it, and it was, I think, a little bit over $200, so definitely a really expensive textbook. And so I did just want to make the board aware that I do think it's important that students would like that access to a textbook, they feel as though it will help them in their classwork, that we do make sure we have this available.
That's a pre, I've never heard that story, that's a pre-educational story, I think. But to the point about the textbooks, where we still have hard copies tends to be in classes.
Right, and she was, it was a final, so that's maybe why I didn't hear the story from her, because we were able to solve it. My concern is that for some parents who might not take initiative, that a student could go through a whole class and forget that hard book if they feel as though they need it. You know, some people aren't as good about speaking up for themselves, so.
Normally, I would say, I would say last year, we could have been, we normally, given here, those students are sitting in a class, and those textbooks are distributed in a classroom. I can't speak to why.
And I do wonder if that's what happened, if students were more closely.
And so.
There were pickup days, I mean, those days, and I remember supposed to be acting on that day when we pulled up. Are you sure we got all our textbooks? Yeah. Anyway, I just want to make sure that if students across the preschools feel as though they learn better with a hard copy, like who they are, that's essentially what makes them so sensitive, that's just one of my concerns.
So, so I don't know what happened to that particular case, what I'm going to guess it happened because it doesn't matter how many kids own those. BP, we have that involvement in the spring, so the textbook should be ordered ahead of time to the bookstore. I, well. Well, I'll ask you why, because I don't think, I don't think that's a common, I don't think that's a common occurrence. I haven't heard from any, literally, since we've been in that specific issue. So I'm guessing if it's been a pandemic, you know, maybe the bookstore didn't get it right. I, to be fair, I would bet, I would bet that it's a communications issue between what the teacher believed they had, and the hardcover chair, and so that's, I would start there personally. My investigation is to say, let me understand that scenario, because I'm not as close to it, so we certainly can look into that. But we always keep sets in the library as well. So full sets of, of course, the textbooks that we use should always be available in the library. So it's another piece that we kind of, what I'm thinking is, wasn't in the book closet, and the teacher maybe didn't go a little bit further. So we'll talk about it a little bit.
Or just there's communication to students, right? If students just know what you just said, hey, you guys, you don't want to use that textbook, it's in the library.
But you're saying you actually came in to pick up your materials, it wasn't present in the materials. So that's, so. But.
I don't want to personalize this. I'm speaking up just because I want to make sure that other students know that they can have access to these.
I would say that you had the materials, the kid, the other kids had more materials. They probably were not given those at book pickup. They probably were given those as, they may have requested it, the teacher said, oh, I have a copy, there you go. And then ran, to your point about running out, probably ran out and then your son didn't have one. That's the piece I think we need to.
And an odd year, again, you know, it's just an odd year because of COVID and not starting for certain.
I think Ashley's point of that the kids know if they don't have it, they can speak up and ask and then they're.
Right, you didn't have, I was saying, you had higher copy. Well, I don't like to, I don't even like to trust it at that level. Like, I want to know, like, the way this should work is if there's 30 kids in a class, we should have 30 books ordered. And the teacher normally would be, you know, making sure that each of those students has the book. What, it doesn't matter, you know, the navigation that it comes from, but that should actually be a checkpoint that the student actually has it. And, and again, AP still tends to be one of the spots where we have a physical textbook.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Charlie, do you have something? I just wanted to ask generally whether year-to-year we see increases in these E book fees.
Yes.
And, and how they are accelerating more quickly than you thought they were going to. I seem to remember a few years ago, we were noticing the pace fees were going up more than you thought that you see.
Well, I, there's a bit of a background on sort of as I alluded to with the year licenses versus the six-year. The six-year are definitely cheaper. To be quite honest, all tech is going up quite a bit. And to be perfectly transparent, when the federal government gives you money, corporations take advantage of that. And so a little bit of it is that particular piece of it where they know that we have the money now. And so they do, there has been an increase in all tech. Textbooks are not, have not been immune to that, so.
And competition between publishers helps with keeping similar costs down? Or are there publishers that are just known for certain, you know, areas of textbooks or?
I would say that there's very few players in the marketplace. And sometimes there is competition and sometimes maybe there's coordinated competition for this.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Just to be blunt.
No, it's not there.
You know, our fact is, this is not something you can go shop around and all of a sudden get a real good deal. And that's the way in tech in general.
And if I can just add that, you know, it also increases accessibility for students who do have reading disabilities and or English as a second language. So there are a lot of advantages to having that where a student may struggle with reading some of the texts, having the auditory ability is beneficial.
Good point.
The other thing too is they're often updated, you know.
In real time.
In real time versus wait for the next edition.
We are relating to accessibility. What kind of support system from our district is provided to say the parents could have a financial concern related to hands-on, you see textbooks or the computers and stuff? I know it could just.
We're drifting a little bit far, but you can answer it quick, but we're drifting a little bit far from our vote on these. But if you can answer that quickly, Sean.
Yes, if a student is on free reduce, they, they are in favor in terms of their Chromebooks and their E texts. In fact, they don't even rent the Chromebook with us for us. We often roll out and take that just because a new generation is coming out.
So students does have an access.
Oh, yeah, and no one, no, no student is denied access.
Which is an important point.
So.
Okay. Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
And I still bring over the sticker shot of AP Italian, so Italian 2008.
And that has not changed.
Yeah, I don't think it's, no, it's. Okay, do I have a motion on 13I schooling's career experience in soul council? Second.
So this, you can, you can, and back to wireless for this product, as a matter of fact. This is something we've been looking for for a long time. It'll bring together the counseling services, the career exploration pieces of our, of our counseling program along with the term investment. It's, this package is something that is a one-stop shop for a lot of the counseling services that we provide to students. And even some that we will begin to provide for the first time in the coming years. The nice part about this is while it does roughly add $10,000 to our budget on this, it enables us to, it's only adding $10,000, it's enabled us to replace several other products. Not beyond career-ready, Calendy, which is a standard system. And so it's really going to enable us to better facilitate our advisories next year as well as take a step towards our water bowl of ensuring that every single student has that career opportunity, that career experience opportunity and be able to track it in a way we've never been able to track. So we're, we're excited about this product.
And just to try to ask, what are my students?
No, no, no. This will, this will be counselors, student, and parent. So parents will have access to this as well so that they can see each and everything that their child has related to counseling, post-secondary applications, what, what did the counselor deliver in advisory this week? So it's a pretty robust product. I met the developer and actually the owner of this about three years ago. I explained to her while we were doing the career advisement space and she has spent the last three years building this. Now, they've got over a million students already on the hot one, but no one is trying to get what we're trying to do. And Sean, actually, there's a whole lot more to this, including the research beyond high school piece, which is the design that we had for their student and the experiences that lead them to the employment that we were designing for. What's their salary, she's even, I mean, it is amazing and it's rare because I have dealt with software development for, you know, 35, 36 years. She stayed with it and really built something. I told her though, here's, if you build it for us, you'll have something that they're reporting by parents. What we're doing as a teacher of this work. And she has put together an amazing program. We're, if we include Calendy, we are operating five different programs just in the career space. This allows, you know, you can track and, and think about your end users. So your teacher that you're wanting to use this advisory or your family to, so they can be able to go to one place and one platform. I don't think this is going to be. I'm really hoping that parents see what it is, they'll be like, wow, this is. It even has an alumni, I mean, she built it for us. It, it's amazing what this.
The amazing tracking and metrics to add to everything we're already trying to get.
Well, actually, once we get it, migrate it and understand it better, we'll come in and do a demonstration to the board on this. It's going to be something.
Sean, I don't, you don't have a contract?
Um, yeah, I can send you the quote on that. It's, everything is done electronically now.
Okay.
So I wasn't able to print out the version of it for you. But I can get the.
So not the quote of the contract?
We have, we have a.
The actual contract. Yeah, I can, I can get the contract too if it's pretty standard, fully, but I can get the.
We have a lot of lawyers on the board, really, so. They're in their free time or recreational activities, so. So, okay, are we, any other questions or comments? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle? Collins?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
We have a motion on number 14 intergovernmental agreement, RPA, Kyle, County District, special education. Second.
Okay, so we are asking, as we have agreed these years, we're required to enter into agreement with the county district for special education. We have a group of students within our district that are not able to receive F A and therefore unless they are placed in another program due to the complexity of their needs. And so we have a small group of students that two hundred percent at, through T D S E. And so we would like to consider that relationship.
Just for some historical context, having looked at these, at this particular intergovernmental agreement and typically this meeting, I said a rough math, you know, these are about, these are expensive and complex kids. It's about 65,000 a kid. There have been many years where we had fewer kids at 80, 90, 100,000, depending on if this is student habit, his or her own nurse. So these are really, really involved students. But this is, I think a lot of the board members know, we've made a conservative effort here to make sure that our district special education students to the possible extent that we can get their services here. You know, if we think about it from the parent point of view, if you've got a child, you know, with these services, would you want to be able to send your student to his or her community school? And so in the times that you see this coming from us, we simply don't have another option, a better option or a more affordable option. And neither is the, the program that's been a very good service for our kids over the years.
I did have one question about it. It says that the agreement shall commence on August 25th of 2021 and will terminate on June 10th of 2022. So it's not a full calendar year, so is, is there no summer school? Is where, it's the calendar year?
So this agreement, correct, well, this agreement is for their standard school year. Extended school year is separate. So that is their calendar year. And that's usually the agreement this year.
And previous years, the number was, but we have it at less than 10, five or?
It's typically less than 10, but it varies and, and so the numbers, I mean, this is not the highest contract that we've done by, and we've, we've had higher contracts with fewer kids. It just, it's a cost per student and it's, again, it's each of these students, it depends on what their specific needs are.
Again, I am very impressed to see that from our state, our district is providing this kind of service because when you compare this to overseas, especially in Asia, too, we do not have this kind of system at all. And this is really beneficently beneficial to the students who need it and as a parent, so. It's really great.
Thank you. Coyle? Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
15 is just informational calendar items, any additions or changes on the 16th in the first grade school. Gosh, there is, there will be a education committee meeting, I believe, in mid-August. Looks like the 17th. Okay, August 17th.
Almost settled, true?
Yeah, for education. Any other items? Yeah, no. Are there any additional comments? Do I have a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of review of closed session minutes? Acquirement, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable imminent or pending litigation, and security procedures in the use of personnel equipment to respond to an actual, may threaten or risk potentially danger to safety of employees, staff, public, or public party. We'll move. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Close session? Okay, all right, do I have a motion to return to open session? Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on personnel actions item 20A through H? Second. Is this, is it amended? No, it is amended.
Owen?
Oh, it has amended, then we got you, yes, yes. It has amended. Give us the second.
Uh, give the theory.
Okay. Oh, nice, sharing. Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Okay, 20I, we are tabling until the September 7th board meeting. Do I have a motion on 21 approval of closed session minutes from June 7th, 2021?
Sorry.
Back ahead. Collins?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.